Ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public forum with the candidates for Morton County Commission. I am Kathryn Sprinzenatic with the Bismarck Tribune, and I will be your moderator this evening. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by the Bismarck Tribune and Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. There are three candidates running for election for two open seats on the Morton County Commission, and three have joined us here tonight. They are Andy Zachmeyer, Woody Barth, and Jim Bame. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you. Viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 667-3237 between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. tonight, Tuesday, September 30th. That number again is 667-3237. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on issues that affect the people of Morton County. Now, let's meet our candidates. You each will have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Morton County Commission, and we will begin with Mr. Zachmeyer.
Thank you, Kathryn, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, Dakota Media Access, and the Bismarck Tribune for sponsoring tonight's event. I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our views. I'd also like to thank the audience for being here tonight. I'm Andy Zachmeyer. I am originally from Mandan, graduated from Mandan High School in 1984. I have an associate's degree from Bismarck State College, a bachelor's degree from University of North Dakota, and I completed additional training and college work at Lake Region State College in Devil's Lake. Currently, I've been a county commissioner for the past eight years. My portfolios are social services, mental health, planning and zoning, metropolitan planning and zoning, and county parks. It's been a very exciting time these past several years in Morton County. Our population is growing, more business opportunities have been achieved, we are moving in a more professional manner and more professional services. We're holding county government available, and I'd like to continue to be doing that for another term.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. Mr. Barth?
Thank you, Kathryn. To the League of Women Voters, Dakota Media Access, and the Bismarck Tribune for sponsoring this event this evening. My name is Elwood "Woody" Barth, a family farmer and rancher about 25 miles south of Mandan, raise crops and livestock there, a third-generation family farm with my family, lifelong resident of Morton County, graduated from Bismarck State College with a degree in farm and ranch management, and have been an active farmer for the past 35 years. Businessperson, active in the community, on the Flacher Community Integrated Union Board, different boards, including Flacher, past president of the North Dakota Farmers Union. I'm running for the Morton County Commission because I believe I am very capable, very understanding the issues which affect Morton County, our growth, our development here in Morton County. But the most important part of our role as county commissioner is to provide safety and security for our citizens through adequate funding of roads and bridges, infrastructure, and other means, and I would like to talk about that the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
Thank you, Connie. And thank you to the League of Women Voters. The number-one reason I want to run is to give people a choice. I live in farm northwest of Mandan, I have five boys, 19 grandkids, and I enjoy what I'm doing. My experience, I think, is a great asset for the Morton County. I was on the school board, I served in the legislature, and I've been on the county commission for the past block years. And I really would like to continue to represent the good people of Morton County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to the questions that have been developed by the members of the League of Women Voters, the Bismarck Tribune, our audience here tonight, and our viewers at home. For our audience here to submit a question, please use the index cards provided to you on your chairs. Viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 667-3237 between 7:00 and 8:00 p.m. tonight only, Tuesday, September 30th. That number again is 667-3237. Candidates have not been given advance copies of the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. Please comply with our time restrictions so we can get to as many as possible tonight. Our timer will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds, then 10 seconds, then stop. The first question this evening will go to Mr. Zachmeyer. What do you see as the biggest strength that Morton County has to offer, and how would you take advantage of that strength for the good of the people of Morton County?
The biggest strength in county government would be our county employees. One of the things we've been able to do over the past several years is add more employees that have a more professional standard and more qualifications for the jobs that they do. We have a professional human resource director, we've added a planning and zoning official to help with our land codes and the enforcement of our land codes. Those are just some of the areas. Our employees are our biggest asset, and right now, our employees are doing the very best they can in assisting and helping the citizens of Morton County. That would be our biggest asset and resource that we can use.
Thank you. And gentlemen, feel free to ask me to repeat a question at any time. Mr. Barth, again, what do you see as the biggest strength that Morton County has to offer, and how would you take advantage of that strength for the good of the people of Morton County?
First of all, the best strength in Morton County is this is a great place to live and work. As I mentioned, I'm a lifelong resident of Morton County. It's been a great place to raise a family and work and make a living. But, you know, the important part is we have a professional staff working at the courthouse, working for the Morton County, whether it's the road crew, the people within the courthouse, or Sheriff's Department are all great people, working hard for the benefit of Morton County, making sure our citizens are safe, are secure, and providing those services necessary to keep our county functioning well. And that's going to only add to our growth and development. We need to make sure that's carefully handled as we move forward. But our strength is those county employees, and this is, again, a great place to live and work.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
I think our biggest asset is the people of Morton County themselves, and then it goes on to the employees. We have to keep the people involved. We have to keep them updated on what we're doing, why we're doing it, and then give them a part in that. We have added a county engineer, county planner, and our human service director, and our county auditor is a real big asset. She's been very good as all the other employees. So we have to keep people involved and treat them like we want to be treated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. The next question will go first to Mr. Barth. What do you see as an area that needs addressing in Morton County, and how would you address it? So really, the flip side of the last question.
An area that needs to be addressed, we need to look at all areas of government, making sure that all areas are efficient. The voters just approved a new combined law enforcement correctional facility that we need to work on that to make sure that's to benefit of Morton County citizens. All departments need to work for the betterment of Morton County. Some great strides have been made to help move this county forward. We need to even look at more areas to help Morton County, some of those areas of combining services, if possible, if it's to benefit the Morton County residents as well. And we just need to keep a handle, a control on growth and development, making sure it's done the right way, and protect the citizens that have lived here their whole lifetime, and new residents that want to move to Morton County and be a part of our county.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame, same question. What do you see as an area that needs addressing in Morton County, and how would you address it?
I think the biggest issue that's coming down the pike might be the growth in the Morton County residents and housing development. We have lots of policies in place, and I think we need to keep updating them just to address the new people coming into the county with the additional development.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. And Mr. Zachmeyer?
One of the biggest areas that I see that we need to continue to develop on is overall business development to create opportunity. One of those areas we can do that is working with, like, Bismarck Mandan Development Association to try to provide those opportunities. Job creation is one of the things that Morton County citizens are continually asking for, and how can we do that? Is that through the Bismarck Mandan Development Association as far as promotion? Do we have enough different aspects to continue people, to have people here happy and willing to work here? So business development is one. Another area that I think is very important for the county to develop would be tourism. That is just one area. We have come a long ways with our county parks, but I think that is one area that can create opportunity that the county really needs to address.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. This next question will go first to Mr. Bame. What do you anticipate for rural business development in Morton County in the next four years?
Well, I think it's pretty much what we're doing now, just more additional growth out in the county with different buildings and... We plan on moving our county shop out sometime in the future and things like that. But basically, it's just keep our development going as we are now.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmeyer?
One area of rural development would be kind of more or less related to the oil field. There's been some oil field impacts that have occurred in Hebron-Glenallan area because of their closer proximity to the oil field. There are certain projects that have been requested to, as far as industrial parks, to try to promote some oil field development or oil field services. Glenallan and Hebron have, and New Salem, have had some success. They've added some grain elevators, larger grain elevator projects to facilitate ag. There's been some wind turbine development. Mainly, the area that we need to be watching for to help the rural areas would be oil field services. That seems to be where the biggest draw is at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. Mr. Barth?
Due to area growth and development, it's going to be threefold. First of all, agriculture is our number-one industry in North Dakota. That's going to be very important for Morton County. Oil development, the action that's happening in Bakken, Morton County, Mandan, our gateway to the west, it's going to lead us to help develop that Bakken, and Mandan and Morton County is going to be a part of that. As well, the energy industry, whether it's renewable energy, wind energy, and our longstanding coal industry are all going to be very important to energy growth as well. Morton County can play a role in assisting that growth, being a part of that growth, development with businesses. But to help accomplish that, we're going to have to need adequate infrastructure, roads, bridges. We're going to need adequate Sheriff's Department, adequate policing. We're going to have to make sure all departments of Morton County are in on the growth and development that we anticipate in those three major industries.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. The next question will go first to Mr. Zachmeyer. Building off the last question, what can Morton County do to attract rural business development?
One of the areas in visiting with the rural city councils during the past four years especially, they have definitely liked working with the Bismarck Mandan Development Association. They feel that they are getting good services with them. Bismarck Mandan Development Association by contract is basically our business and job development authority. So continuing to work with them and have them promote these areas and what is available is going to benefit the county as a whole. The rest would more or less be infrastructure. There are certain roads in these rural communities that are federal highway roads that kind of more or less come under the direction of the county to maintain. We need to work with the State Department of Transportation, find the various grants to make sure that those road infrastructure needs for those rural towns are met.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. Mr. Barth?
Could you repeat the question?
Certainly. So building off the last question, what can Morton County do to attract rural business development?
Number-one thing for the business development is have a strong county. As we talked about earlier, I think we all agree that, you know, this is a great county. We have a great infrastructure. We need to improve on the infrastructure of roads and bridges. That's very important. We need to make sure we have a strong Sheriff's Department, that making sure our Morton County is safe for those new industries, new development as it comes forward. We need to work on tourism. We need to work on areas of recreation, our park systems. Our library is very important. It takes all those different entities, all those different areas, to make sure we have development and can help entice that development to come to Morton County and work here, live here. And as we mentioned before, it's a great place to live and work, and that's going to help attract those new businesses as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
Thank you. We have to work with our business development association, and then we have to provide the infrastructure, the taxes, try to keep our taxes low to draw those people. And we need good parks, bridges, roads, and try to have fairer economical housing for these people.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Mr. Barth. It's a question from one of the members of the audience here this evening. How does Morton County deal with conflicting demands for uses of rural land due to growth?
First of all, you know, we need to make sure private property owners are protected in the process of land being developed and being turned into new uses here in Morton County. We need to be very mindful of the private property rights and ownerships here in Morton County. But we know development's going to happen. We need to help facilitate that. Morton County's gone a long way to have a planning and zoning director put on board. The Morton County Commission's been very active in that, and we need to make sure that any development that happens, and we know it's going to happen, that it's done in the right way, that the policies are in place to make sure that we are careful in which way it's developed, that we have a long-range plan for that development, and making sure any new housing, any new businesses are put in the right areas, they're not conflicting in that area, and having a strong economic growth for that development is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
Would you repeat that question?
Certainly. How does Morton County deal with conflicting demands for uses of rural land due to growth?
Well, we have to work with the owners of that property and provide them with the information, what this land's going to be used for, and then to provide the potential buyer of that land, and to protect the privacy rights of these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmeyer?
One of the biggest areas that I could see on conflicting demands would be, is infrastructure out far enough for that rural subdivision to go in? Because subdivisions are coming. They're just going to be slowly added on to the rest, but at a certain point, is there enough rural water? Is there enough roads? One of the biggest things in state law under planning and zoning that the county commission and county planning and zoning authority are liable for is that growth and the controlling of expenses. So the infrastructure, it has to be slow, and the county commission and the planning and zoning board is very cognizant. The more the subdivisions go out there, it limits what you can do agricultural-wise. So maintaining a good planning and zoning office, good development, a good urban and land use plan will do a lot to avoid those conflicts.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. The next question expands upon that, and will go first to Mr. Bame. Non-agricultural residential building has increased greatly in Morton County in recent years. While much of it has been in subdivisions and housing clusters, it's almost impossible to take a county road without finding a sprinkling of new homes. Will there be a price for this kind of growth in terms of providing services, et cetera, when the economy takes an inevitable downturn?
I didn't quite understand that question. Would you repeat it?
Sure. So basically, with the growth of subdivisions and housing clusters, with, you know, with growth into Morton County in recent years, will there be a price for this type of growth in terms of providing services, et cetera, when the economy takes an inevitable downturn?
I think we can. I know that development is going to occur, like Mr. Zachmeyer said. We just have to be ready for it with the roads and infrastructure and all these other things. And a lot of these roads, which are gravel now, I think might eventually have to be paved to provide access to these development. And I think we just have to be ready for it with planning and zoning, and just get ready for it because it's coming.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmeyer?
Right now, I think we're doing all right. Our economy right now is very strong. I would agree that it could be inevitable that the economy takes a downturn. Right now, the way development is occurring, the county has been able to absorb that. It has not increased county costs. I just do not foresee a problem in the future because it appears that the majority of the citizens that are here are definitely building higher-end homes, they are definitely making a life here, and there's been a lot of opportunity. What's going to happen when the economy turns could be difficult to predict. As of now, I think we're sitting good.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. Mr. Barth?
There will be challenges as we continue to grow, as we have more development within our rural areas of our county. As the major metropolitan area expands, we will have challenges to meet. And in a downturn economy, that's going to present challenges with itself. We know that there's increasing costs with however we maintain those roads, those bridges, snow removal, all areas that are needed to keep those citizens safe and secure, have them transport goods to market, transport supplies back to their farms and ranches, have the urban sector be safe as we move forward. It's going to present challenges, and it's going to impress and have increased costs as we go forward. We need to make sure that we're ready for those increased costs. If we do see less dollars coming into the county, we're going to have to be able to address that. This is going to have to be a partnership amongst all government entities, including the state of North Dakota, to make sure we can maintain those services to keep our county residents secure and safe as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. This next question will go first to Mr. Zachmeyer. How should Morton County manage current and future flood issues?
Right now, under planning and zoning, again, because that's where a lot of these issues have to be addressed. We worked with FEMA to come up with a new flood overlay plan. We used a lot of the data from the 2011 flood to come up with that plan and to justify the plan. So part of it would be any type of development in areas that were inundated during the 2011 flood would be automatically identified. We also have the Hart River Basin, which is also known to flood, Sweet Briar Creek. There's a few other creeks that are known to flood. Every single one of those creeks has a flood overlay plan that would help address it. The citizens in that area know it. They know that there's only so much that can go down there because, like I said before, it is required by state law that when you do these subdivisions, that the cost to the county in emergency management is even considered.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmeyer. Mr. Barth?
I think, first of all, we've learned a lot from the flood that did occur in 2011. Let's hope we don't have to repeat that in our lifetime. That would be the first thing that would be great for this county, to make sure that that isn't repeated. We need to work with federal agencies. Army Corps of Engineers has controlled the river, and we need to make sure that we're ready for anything that happens upstream on the Missouri River. Our biggest threat of a flood would be that stream there, as long as Mr. Zachmeyer pointed out, other tributaries of that within Morton County. We need to make sure development is done right, that we develop in the areas that are not in a floodplain, and that may have developed into a floodplain because of other development around our Morton County. We need to make sure we're aware of that. We need to have good staffing available with the right resources and right information to make sure we make good decisions on all areas of growth and development and all of the areas concerning Morton County citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. And Mr. Bame?
We have to watch where we develop these people so they're not in the floodplain, and then we have to work with FEMA and our Water Resource District and all the other agencies to come up with a plan and to be very cognizant of what could happen. And there's things going to happen that we have no control over, like the last flood. Things will happen, we'll have to deal with them at the time, but we try to eliminate as much as we can.
Thank you. This next question will go first to Mr. Barth. It is a question from one of the members of our audience here this evening. Should Morton County seek more oil impact funds, and if so, for what purposes?
Most definitely. I talked earlier about all entities of government working together. We need to have more dollars coming from the state of North Dakota. We are impacted by energy development, by oil development. I note a lot about that. And for us to keep property taxes low, we as commissioners to keep property taxes low, we're going to need assistance from the state of North Dakota for all areas of government, whether it's our roads and bridges, our social services, other areas of government. We're going to need assistance from the state of North Dakota to have dollars to help keep our services for our citizens here in Morton County. So there's many talk, much talk about new legislation being developed for oil development-impacted counties. We need to make sure there's also dollars available for counties such as Morton that are at a gateway, at a crossroads for that energy development.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
I think it's only fair that we should get asked for more money from the oil development because we do definitely have an impact. Everything we do costs us more because of that. I know our fuel is higher, the gravel, our crushing and all that is a lot higher. We've been bought out, our gravel pits have been bought out by the oil industry. We lost our Scoria pits to them, and we're losing some of our employees to the oil industry. So we definitely have an impact, and I think it's only fair that we should be considered as an impact county, and we should be at least considered in some of the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmeyer?
I do believe Morton County needs to address and ask for bigger oil impact funds. The biggest area that I see that we could use those funds would be in the area of social services. The caseload in social services is continuing to increase. A lot of the out-of-state workers that come to North Dakota are coming from out-of-state where they do not have a job, they don't have enough money to afford housing when they initially arrive, they don't have enough to take care of their initial needs when they first arrive. When they first arrive, the first place they can go for any type of help is the social service office. So we're seeing an increase in the number of caseloads in that area. Not to mention that once they're here, if they qualify, we have to provide those services regardless of what the budget would be. So oil impact funds right now, even across the entire state, I think would have the biggest impact in social services.
Thank you. Again, I'd like to invite our in-house audience to submit questions using the index cards provided by our volunteers. As a reminder, television viewers can call 667-3237 during our forum tonight, Tuesday, September 30th. This next question will go first to Mr. Bame. Is Morton County managing requests for industrial parks or new construction in an adequate way? Why or why not?
We have been addressed more people, one industrial parks. I know there was one going in on Highway 25, but the people around the area objected to it, and they just really opposed that particular site. There's another one being proposed, West of Mandan. Now, that's in relation to the truck stop, West of Mandan, and some of that, they have issues with our planning and zoning and the restrictions and things like that. We definitely need some more industrial parks for this development, which we're going to have. So it's just a matter of working with the individuals that own the land with different ... with what we need and want as far as our input goes. So I think we need industrial parks, and we need to work with the people who own the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmeyer?
Industrial development for Morton County is basically twofold. One area would be in county planning and zoning. All our county planning and zoning regulations are fully compliant with state law. The other area would be with metropolitan planning, which helps determine land use and also helps to determine the traffic routes and the various highways, streets that could service an industrial park. So the conflict usually seems to be the location, not necessarily the guidelines. I believe in voting. That would be fair. I believe in voting. That would be fair, and the only way to be fair is to enforce state law and the county planning and zoning regulations fairly for everyone. If you start picking and choosing when you're going to enforce those regulations, then chaos can start. Someone or a political favor could start. The main thing that I am concerned about is, is did we follow regulations? Does it comply with state law? Does it comply with the master plan? Does it comply with the transportation plan? If those are all there, then that project should be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Mr. Barth?
There's no doubt as the industries in North Dakota grow, the three major industries we've talked about earlier, agricultural, energy, and oil all continue to grow here in North Dakota, we're going to have needs for increased industry, industrial parks here in Morton County. We have to work with zoning and planning. We have to conform to state law, as Andy talked about. Those things are very important, but we, most of all, we need to be concerned about how it's going to disrupt or work with landowners in those areas where those industrial parks might be developed. We need to make sure that traffic flow is done properly, that the roads and the infrastructure is adequate to handle industrial parks, that we do it in the right proper order, that the other areas around that are planned for the right uses as well. But we know we're going to have growth and development. We need growth and development in Morton County, and ways to address those is through proper work of the Morton County Commission and working with the staffs of the various departments within Morton County.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. This next question will go first to Mr. Zachmyer, and it's another audience question that follows up on an earlier question on rural land use. This audience member says, "Your answers on conflicting demands for uses of rural land are right on. However, there seems to be a problem with enforcement violations. How can you address this issue?"
Mainly, we have to address those through the state's attorney's office. It is the state's attorney's office to come up with the correct solution for when uses are not within standards. That is, it's the state's attorney's responsibility. It is, it can be a misdemeanor to violate these state laws and these regulations. It is the state's attorney's full responsibility when the time comes, when the reports are showing to him that there is a violation, that the state's attorney properly enforce those rules and regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Mr. Barth?
We need to make sure that any violation is addressed properly, that the law is being conformed to, that the issue that needs to be addressed is addressed. We need to make sure as commissioners that we have the dollars available to make sure any complaint is being followed up on, that any issues are being dealt with. We need to make sure that proper staffing with the proper resources are available to make sure that those, any kind of zoning issues, planning issues are dealt with. We know any kind of growth development does bring a few hiccups on occasions, and we need to address those adequately. We as commission, our number one goal should be making sure we have the dollars available to help do that, and also the adequate staffing to do that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
We need to follow state law and what we're doing, and then, like Andy said, no matter what the county does, we have to rely on the state's attorney to enforce those rules. Our hands are tied. Other than that, we've had four or five different violations, and we've addressed them at the county level, but that's as far as it got. We haven't, hadn't had the state's attorney to back us up on those issues. So it's the state's attorney that's sort of a roadblock at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. This next question will go first to Mr. Barth. With an aging population, what should Morton County do to ensure that it can provide adequate social services to its citizens?
First of all, you're correct, aging population here in Morton County amongst a lot of residents in North Dakota that's changed somewhat over the last five years. But we need to make sure we have the adequate resources to be able to help the aging population. Those are people that worked this land and created Morton County for us, and we need to make sure that we have the adequate resources available to help them in their aging years of life. A lot of the rules and regulations we follow, of course, are state law, and a lot of the resources, the dollars we do have for social services do come from state of North Dakota. We need to maintain a strong social services department here in Morton County and make sure that the resources available are getting out to the citizens, wherever areas they need to be addressed as citizens, and making sure we take care of our aging population is very important, and we can do that with adequate resources and adequate funding at all levels.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
It's like Mr. Barth said, though, we need to have our resources to address these issues. As the population does get older, we need the facilities, nursing homes, and all those other homes to take care of these people and try to keep them in the homes as much as possible. So the main thing there is just the resources necessary to take care of those people.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmyer?
This is another area that the county can work on with the Association of Counties and the state legislature. Right now, the state legislature did pass a law in regards to elderly vulnerable adults, but the funding really wasn't there, at least to the significant need that all citizens of North Dakota would need. So one of the areas this next legislative session is, again, vulnerable adults, to work on that and to try to secure that funding. On the county side, there are programs available in social services to help the elderly people stay in their homes, to help them with some of their daily tasks. And another area would be through Custer District Health. They also have home healthcare nurses and home healthcare type things to help elderly adults within their homes. And then finally, on property taxes, I believe they can use the homestead credit to get somewhat of a lower property tax rate, which should also help them. Those would be the areas mainly where the county can help.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. This next question will go first to Mr. Bame, sort of the flip side to the last question. How does Morton County contribute to and support youth?
How does Morton County support me?
Youth.
Oh, youth, okay. It's basically the same as our elderly people. We have to provide the programs to keep these kids in school and work with our schools and with our sheriff's department, with all these different agencies to support these young people, to give them a good education, number one, and if they do get into off the track a little bit, we need to help them and don't incarcerate them right away, but provide the programs that'll help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmyer?
One of the biggest areas, I think, is a success story for Morton County would be in county 4H and extension. Our 4H program, I believe, is probably the best in the state. We have citizens from Burley County coming to Morton County to join our 4H programs, which I think is a credit to our staff that works in the 4H department, in the county extension department. Other areas where the county funds would be Youth Works. There are certain, certain services through Youth Works that the county residents can go to with their children for services if needed. Social Services also has some programs. County Extension has programs. The main thing would be is to continue to work with the sheriff's department, police departments, county extension, county social services, to continue to provide quality services for the youth.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Mr. Barth?
The great news is we have more youth wanting and wanted to be a part of Morton County than ever before. I think we lost a couple generations of youth because of lack of jobs and development here in Morton County as well as North Dakota. So we have more youth staying here than ever before. We do have great programs available. There was mentioned 4H programs. Our extension program is great. We have more beginning farmers than we have for a couple generations. So very important. What we need to do is make sure we maintain the adequate infrastructure so those youth want to stay here, are able to work and live here, recreate in our county. Our strong library system is very important for youth, and as they grow and develop their families here in Morton County, we need to make sure that all those services are available for them. We know none of those come by easily, but with great staff here in Morton County, we can make sure those youth have and the desires they want to live and work here in Morton County.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. This next question will go first to Mr. Zachmyer. Counties play an important role in helping to provide mental and behavioral health services. Over the summer, a report was released that details opportunities for improvement in the mental and behavioral health system in the state. What are your thoughts for helping to bring mental and behavioral health services to a level that meets needs?
Mainly, mental health services. There is some county assistance, again, through social services, but it appears that the majority of it throughout North Dakota is handled by Department of Human Services. So that would mean that proper referrals would need to be made from county social services or from law enforcement to the proper mental health authorities so that the proper assistance is made. If there is a way for funding on the county side that's going to affect property taxes. But mental health services, for the most part, has been traditionally a requirement of the state through West Central Human Services, and that is where we would need to address it jointly with them and then through the state legislature to make sure the proper services are available.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Mr. Barth?
These are people at risk. These are people with, have difficulties that need to be addressed, and we need to work with those people to make sure they are addressed. Human services on a state level is the place that that needs to be addressed. We as a county and our social services department need to provide all the tools, all the resources necessary to help those individuals that are at greatest risk and need our assistance. It's going to take both financial resources and adequate resources of staffing as well to make sure that those services are provided. There's many good programs in place. I think for a while, we as a state have fallen short of some of those needs of some of those individuals, and we need to make sure that we work, again, with the state legislature and making sure that we adequately address the needs of people with mental difficulties.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
These are the most vulnerable people in our society, and I think over the years they have been sort of forgotten, and I think we have to work with our state legislature to get funding for our human services department and our mental health association to provide the funding they need to take care of those people. I think there's programs out there, but there's usually a lack of funding is the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. We have time for one more question this evening, then we'll go to closing comments. The final question of the evening will go first to Mr. Barth. It will close with an audience question. Are there any services that can be combined with the Mandan City Commission to streamline services or reduce costs?
Very good question. We need to explore all those areas. I talked about that earlier. All levels of government need to work together to provide services to our citizens, whether it's our state government, our counties, our cities, our schools, our townships, all need to work together to provide services. The roads and infrastructures are very important, maintaining those as well, adequate county employees. Any way we can combine resources is very important, but we need to make sure that when we do combine resources with other entities, the city, we need to make sure that all citizens of Morton County are treated fairly when we develop those new joint ventures. But we need to explore, and we need to find ways to help reduce costs if possible, and then hopefully utilize those dollars to, for our cost savings of taxes, but also maybe use those resources for other areas of government as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Mr. Bame?
We definitely should work together wherever possible, our law enforcement and our communication center, our law enforcement, our combined law enforcement center, and a new jail now, we're all going to be working together as much as we can, wherever we can provide some services and save some costs. But it's not always possible, but whenever we can, we should try.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmyer?
Well, the county stretches all the way to Hebron. There are certain services we can share with Mandan. Currently, we do have a joint dispatch center. Mandan Police is housed in the Morton County Law Enforcement Center with the Sheriff's Department, but it goes more than just trying to share services with Mandan. We also need to be sharing services with Hebron, Glenallin, Elmont, Eusailam, Flasher. Then we have the rural small towns like St. Anthony, Huff. They all need services. They all should fall under the umbrella of county help and assistance. So working with them to provide joint services is a benefit to the county as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Candidates, thank you for being here tonight. You will now have one minute to provide a closing statement. We'll begin with Mr. Bame.
Thank you. Over the years, the Morton County citizens have to elect the good people to the boards. That's why we were able to reduce our mills last year by 10 mills, 10 mills this year again. Our, our budget is about $21 million at this time, and we've had very good employees. We treat them right. We're very competitive, and whatever, whoever the citizens vote for on this panel, they should feel very comfortable that the Morton County citizens will be, will provide the services that are needed at a reasonable cost, and we won't forget who we're working for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bame. Mr. Zachmyer?
Oh, thank you again, everyone, for putting on this forum and for being here tonight. One of the areas that I wanted to talk about that didn't come up would be joint services between Burley County and Bismarck. I'm not against expanding into those joint services or studying them or seeing if they're even compatible. The one thing that I will say is it is absolutely the county commissioner's duty to make sure Morton County interests are protected. Anything less would mean that if that agreement fails, a prior or a future county commission is then going to have to try to figure out how to restaff that project, how to buy the equipment that is needed. It's a lot to it, but it is the county commissioner's absolute duty to make sure that the county interests are protected. Other than that, my parents believed in community service. They passed that on to me, and that is what I totally believe in, and that's why I enjoy serving on this board as much as I do.
Thank you, Mr. Zachmyer. Mr. Barth?
Again, I want to thank the sponsoring entities this evening. This is a great, great lesson for all of our voters here in Morton County. I'm asking for their vote, their support in November to be elected to the Morton County Commission. It's important for us to elect the right people and elect people that care about Morton County. Lifelong resident of Morton County, it's important that we all work together to help our county grow and develop. It's important for all of us to make sure that we have adequate budgets put in place and work on adequate with our great staff that we do have here in Morton County to provide those services. And again, this is great for all of us to get together here this evening and work on better things for Morton County.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. I wish also to thank the Bismarck Tribune, Dakota Media Access, and volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access, Cable Channel 2, and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the November 4th election. Before we close this candidate forum, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple, and you can find voting information at your county auditor's office and from the North Dakota Secretary of State. Thank you and good night.